If we could say the Pledge of Allegiance together?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will do introduction of members.
Tammy Lemieux Blackstone.
Keith Blackstone.
Carol Larkin Millville.
Karen Vernon Millville.
Sarah Williams Blackstone.
Matt Aaronworth Assistant Superintendent.
And Jason DeFalco Superintendent.
And I do know Jane is here. She will pop on in a few minutes to take over the meeting. And I'm Erin Vinoco Vice Chair, Millville Representative. And the first item on our agenda would be the warrants, which includes minutes from May 28th and our warrants that were sent out to us last night. Did everyone have a chance to review that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion on the approval of Consent Agenda A.
So moved.
Again.
Moved by Tammy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jack. Thank you. Any questions or conversation? All those in favor of Consent Agenda A?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And it looks like the next part of our agenda is School Committee, which is, and the first item we'd like to address is the Retiree Recognition. I know we have many in the meeting to recognize. I can't see everybody. I do have a list, but Jason
Yes. Well, it's very funny because we saw you the day all the crap went down. Like, we saw you Thursday night and Friday night. They canceled that.
Can anyone mute Jane?
I just muted her. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Don't you realize that?
That'll probably be the last time I say that about the School Committee Chair.
You're not off.
Why did we do that? Erin, would you like me to, I lost you there for a second. Would you like me to read the retiree names and the years of service? I wasn't quite sure what you'd ask. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that would be great. I was asking if you had an opening for that. So if you have everyone, even whether they're here or not, and their years of service, I think we'd all love to hear that.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Thank you so much. So first of all, this is awesome to see so many people. I don't think I've seen this many people in 13 weeks, whether it be Zoom or Google or in person. So I'm really excited to see so many of our staff here and particularly our, you know, not to call out any one grade, but our kindergarten staff. It's awesome to see everybody here. And true to form, we've got little signs in the background and I love it, Ms. Doyle. That's great. And I know everybody's here to recognize and honor some very important people. And these individuals have dedicated a huge amount of time to our school system, our children, our families, our towns. And while it's sad to announce their departure, it's also a celebratory moment because it's something that's so well deserved. And so I'll share with folks the list that I have in front of me. I really hope that I don't miss anybody. And then Erin, if it's okay, I know our administrators would like to say a few words about the staff that have served in their buildings, that we're here to recognize this evening. And I will share the folks that aren't here. Not everybody could make it. But first, we have Ms. Anne Spont, who has been with the district for about 16 years, serving most recently in our kindergarten, one of our kindergarten classrooms. And so Anne, we're super sad to see you go, but big congratulations to you. Next, we have Ms. O'Neill, who has served Millville Elementary School for quite some time, I think about 24 years, as an administrative assistant. And I know Ms. Schaefer has a few words for her, but we are very happy for Pat, but we're very sad to see her leave. Next, we have Jeanne Nirborn, who serves in our cafeteria at the high school. And I know I will absolutely miss her because I go down to get my morning coffee occasionally, and she's always good for a few jokes and to help kind of brighten up your day. And she has served us for 24 years since 1996. Anne Maloney, who has served as a special education para at our high school since October 15th, 1999, so going on of 21 years. Lisa Demers has been serving our high school students in our foreign language program since September 1st, 1995, again, for about 25 years. Marsha Cunningham started with the district on October 14th, 1987. And she is retiring from her speech and language, as a speech and language pathologist. So congratulations, Marsha. And Michelle Blanchard and Betty Adams, neither could be here unfortunately. And they started serving our system very close in terms of years of service. Michelle started with us in September, September 1st of 1988. And Betty Adams, September 1st in 1986. So both are retiring this year from the middle school. And so I'll turn it over to our administrators and maybe we can start with the high school and then we'll go to the middle school, Millville, and then the complex. So we just put some order to it. If that's okay, Erin?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, great. So Mike, do you want to share a few words?
Sure. So, good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Dudak. I'm a high school principal. I have three young ladies retiring this year, so I'm sad about that. I wasn't completely aware of all three of them, so it was a bit of a surprise. So in terms of just a quick description, stories for all three. So Jeanne, she's here, but Jeanne started in 96, and all of those were at the high school. So as you know, sometimes our kitchen staff move around a little bit, but she's been a guiding force in the kitchen. I consider that she has a great connection with the staff and the students. She has tremendous amount of jokes. She's a funny individual with a bright personality. We constantly engage in conversations when I go down there in the morning or at lunch. And we have a personal connection because when my wife was pregnant, her son, son's wife was pregnant at the same time, and my little guy, Theo, is two and a half. And I think her grandson are weeks apart. So she would always ask me about how my wife's doing through pregnancy, and that was a stressful time. But she eased me, you know, as a new dad going through that, and we constantly are just talking about our son, grandson, and so forth. So again, she had a special connection with everybody. I hope that she enjoys retirement. I believe she has seven grandchildren. And if that gets too much for her, she's always often to come back. So congratulations, Jeanne. Everybody hear me okay? We're all set?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So Anne Maloney, I know, has been with us since 1999. I had the pleasure of having her at the high school for one year. But within that one year, we had a memorable time together. I know that she's had varied roles in Unit C, but she, her role at the high school is a one-to-one para aide for a young man that I know is going to miss her terribly. We've already heard from the family, from the student, that they are just upset and excited that she's retiring. But, you know, I don't think anybody can match her compassion, her caring, her positive energy. She's one of the nicest people that I've met in the few short months that she's been with us. And I'm hoping that she enjoys retirement as well. Finally, we have Lisa Demers, or as we should call her Madame Demers. I was corrected on one of my first days of school at BMR, when I started eight years ago. And I will, I do recall, one of the first people to actually come into the building and welcomed me to BMR was Lisa. So that's something that I'm always going to remember and appreciate, her warm smile and demeanor and personality. I know that she comes from a family of educators. Her sister is an educator. I believe her father was a professor. She came on, you know, as a French teacher, and that turned into a French Spanish teacher, and then that finally turned into a Spanish teacher. But I know she's loved that transition, you know, with me in terms of that. She's played or had many roles. She was a class advisor. She was our department head for quite some time. She was a NEAS committee leader, remember? And just an all-around leader in our building. She's, you know, we had a superlatives yesterday for our staff for our end-of-year faculty meeting. And she won the superlative for most likely to travel the world. But I don't know where she hasn't been yet, so hopefully you find a place to go during retirement. And with that, those are my three ladies leaving us. And I know all of us are going to miss you all, your peers, colleagues, our students. And we're just wishing you the best of luck on your next adventure in life.
Thanks, Mike. And Tanya? Do you want to speak on behalf of the middle school retirees?
Yes. Hi, I'm Tanya Kohord, the principal at the middle school. And before I start to the two current staff, I do want to give a shout out to Mrs. Maloney because we were lucky enough to have her last year, and she was invaluable, as Mike said. And I'm just glad we had the actual full year of you in person. And I appreciate everything that she's done for the students, and she's definitely kids-first. And that's really goes for the same thing with Mrs. Adams and Mrs. Blanchard. From day one, when I started here just about three years ago, they have always been supportive and helping me to make the best decisions of what's in the best interest of kids and helping to have leadership skills within our building and be the go-to people. They've mentored many people. Mrs. Blanchard, I can't even count the number of people. And I'm extremely appreciative of Mrs. Adams this year mentoring a new ELA teacher in her final year. So we were, I was very excited that she was able to do that and willing. And, you know, Mrs. Adams, in her final year, well, both of them, I don't think they expected to do any of this, but as Mrs. Adams will tell you, anytime I was in her room, she would ask me for some tech help. And I can tell you, at this point, she has become a tech guru that I'm sure she didn't think she would ever become, because she always says she's not good with technology, yet she kept learning and still keeps learning and shows everyone what a true, you know, what it is to be a lifelong learner. Same thing with Mrs. Blanchard. Still looking for PD opportunities in the final year and things to expand and learn her growth. And we're very appreciative of what Mrs. Blanchard did with our SRO in leading co-teaching classes with him, especially with the health curriculum, especially last year when we had, you know, when vaping became a huge issue. She really took that on to help educate our students and what the, how it wasn't very, you know, how the effects are with our students. So if it wasn't for their true leadership, and I can only imagine the impact they've had in the amount of years that they've had, and I'm very appreciative for their support and their guidance and leadership that they've shown in the short years that I've known them.
Excellent. Thanks. Thanks, Tanya. And Christina?
Hello, everyone. I'm Christina Schaefer, principal at Millville Elementary. And I've actually, and I'm going to shout you out too, because I actually started as a long-term sub in the complex, and Anne worked with me in the classroom that I was in. So I have to shout out Anne, too.
And you know a lot to me.
Um, I have two staff that are leaving Millville that are going to be sorely missed. Marsha Cunningham, she's 33, I actually did the math today, 32, almost 33 years as an SLP in the district. She supports the students, the staff, and the families. She's definitely someone the staff uses as a resource. I've myself gone and asked her questions about different speech and language concerns. And she's just a smiling face. And, you know, the kids and the parents love seeing her and love working with her. And we're definitely going to miss her. In addition to the fact that she's had student teachers and had former students actually come back who are studying speech and language, and they've actually come back and done some observations with her. So it's nice to see that she's, the kids that she has worked with are back, come visiting and learning from her. So, and also Mrs. O'Neill. What do I say about Mrs. O'Neill other than she's been my right-hand woman? This is year two for me as the principal. And Mrs. O'Neill helped me. If it weren't for her, she told me where everything was, where every paper I needed was and every letter. She's been a blessing. She's been with the district 23, almost 24 years. She actually started as a bus monitor. And then she went into the office at the complex, and then she came to Millville. And she started about the same time as I did in Millville as a teacher. She was, she started as the admin assistant. She's the gatekeeper of the school, and she knows there's not a person that she does not know. We actually had someone come to register a child this year for kindergarten, and she recognized them as a child that we had a couple of years ago's parent. And she knew, she knows exactly who everyone is by face and name. So definitely going to miss having both Mrs. O'Neill and Mrs. Cunningham at Millville next year.
And Christina, I don't know that we've ever had an opportunity to formally recognize Greenie. Do you want to say a few, I know we had a big celebration for Greenie, but.
Yes. So we also actually had Greenie retire. Those of you who know Mr. Langto. Sorry, don't mind the dogs barking. And I'm going outside. I apologize. So Mr. Langto was our custodian for, I think, 13 or 14 years. No, maybe more than that, maybe 15. He is such a hard worker. He, there was never anybody that could worry about anything more than him. He always worried about where the kids were. He always worried about the ground being safe for the kids to walk on during snowstorms, make sure there was no spills on the ground. He just really took pride in our school and made our school look as wonderful as it does. So congratulations to him as well, who, he is enjoying retirement right now.
Thanks, Christina. I'm glad we could agree that the recognition he deserves, too. And last but not least, the JFK AFM Complex. Jenny?
Hi, Anne. I know now you realize how much you're loved. Look at the screen. All your peers are here, and most of the parent professionals are here. We love you. I didn't have the privilege to work with you for a long time, but I got to know you very well. And I do want to take this opportunity to thank you for all the years of service you have given us, especially to JFK. You're really truly a caring individual who would put your student first. And please don't cry. But right now, you need to focus on you and your family, especially your grandchildren. And I can speak for that because I have a grandson, and I'm looking forward to in 10 years, I can spend time with him. And I'm on behalf of JFK AFM Complex. We wish you best of luck, and we will miss you. And I'm going to miss that smiley face, that sweet face. Every time I get stressed out, I know where I'm going. Go to your room and look at you, because you're just so kind to all of us. And thank you.
Thanks. And there is one more. Karen Bro. And I don't, you know, she retired very early in the school year, and she was the administrative assistant for the AFM side of the JFK AFM Complex. I just want to share a couple of words about Karen, because as a new superintendent, you know, you always know, you learn quickly who to go to, kind of for the scoop. And Karen was one of those people that I would go and check in with. And there were a couple of just hilarious conversations I had with her, and you can tell that she was ready to retire. I knew that early on because she said to me on a couple of occasions, "Give 'em hell, kid, and you're doing a hell of a job, kid." I was always kid at the end of every sentence. I was going to, I was just getting such a kick out of her, and I wish she was here that we could celebrate her in person, but want to give her a big shout out, too. I think she's somewhere in the southwest New Mexico, I believe, with her family. And I know for sure, in my short time, I definitely miss, definitely miss her. She was always a good sounding board and always had a pulse on what was going on. So just want to give her a big shout out, too. Erin, back over to you. Anything from the committee?
Sure. I'll give the rest of the committee a chance to speak if they had any, anything special to say about anyone. I cannot see all of you, but just jump in if you want to be next, I guess.
Tammy? I just want to say congratulations to all of you. I hope you all enjoy your retirement. Thank you for all that you have done for our community, for our kids. I do want to give a special shout out to Mrs. Blanchard. I know she's not in this, but hopefully she'll watch it later. Mrs. Blanchard's sound advice is often remembered in the Lemieux household. Various occasions, the weirdest situations, my youngest daughter will try to misdo Mrs. Blanchard's dialect or accent, and she will give us the advice of the day on what Mrs. Blanchard would do in a certain situation, whether it's at a family party or, you know, driving, talking about road rage, or Mrs. Blanchard comes up often. So she will remain with us forever. And Mrs. Nurban, I also sent a private email to her. She, "I am that parent that forgets to give the kid lunch money. I am that parent. I am often negative something before they start giving you the evil eye." But Mrs. Nurban never gives the evil eye, I am told. So thank you for that and not making Alexa feel weird because she has the mom that forgets to send the money. So thank you to those ladies. And Mrs. Bro, when I was doing Bipo, was always marvelous, always a marvelous resource. So I was very excited that she is sailing on and enjoying retirement. So, but thank you all.
Hey, anyone else like to speak on behalf of one of the retirees?
Yeah, I'd just let, I'd like to let Madame know that I will never forget "La Cialle La For Me" by Jeanne Delafontaine. I'm going to be able to recite it for the rest of my life. Thank you. Thank you very much, because I still do it all the time.
Thank you, Jeff, Jack. Sorry. Thank you, Jack.
Anyone else?
Yes, Cecilia. I will try. Hard to speak, but I've had the privilege to work with many of the people that are retiring in this district. So first, I wish them all much happiness and health and enjoyment on their next adventures. I did work with Anne Maloney many years at AFM, and it was wonderful. I did not realize she was retiring, so good luck with her. But I guess I have to go right to Anne Spont on the rest of it. She's been an amazing team member. It's been wonderful to work with you. I'm not sure what's going to happen at the end of that hallway, but it will definitely not be the same without you, Anne. So we do wish you much happiness and joy, and we'll see you tomorrow.
That's right. There's still tomorrow.
There is. The kindergarten celebration.
Perfect.
Erin, I don't know if you can see, but Mrs. Dorfman has her hands up.
Just unmute yourself. Go ahead, Ms. Dorfman.
Can't leave without, oh, no. Am I muted? Am I frozen? Okay. I can't leave the meeting without just saying, just, I speak, I know, for all of us, especially in the kindergarten wing, Anne, we just, we love you from the bottom of our heart. We are just, like Cecilia said, the end of the hallway. I don't know. It won't be the same. Just having you be our team member, whether, you know, we're just together professionally, personally, we are going to miss you so very much. But boy, you've got so much excitement ahead of you. We love you, Anne.
Lanay?
Okay. I'm not good at talking in front of groups. I'm used to talking in front of five-year-olds, so this is a little nerve-wracking for me. But I would be amiss to not speak on behalf of Anne, and I'll try to do it without crying. My 11 years in the district, I have been beside her. She grew from being a coworker to a mentor to a friend. I don't know what I'm going to do without her. But I know she's ready for this next part, and she's more than earned it. I didn't expect this to be how our year ended. I sort of figured I would still be with her until the last day. But she handled it as she does everything with professionalism and grace. And I just want to say I'm honored to have spent the last 11 years by her side. So best of luck, Anne. You'll be missed.
All right. And is there anyone else before we, it looks like Ms. Buto. Go ahead.
Hi. I started in the district 11 years ago with Anne Spont in her first-grade classroom. Was her first full-time position, I guess, at our school. And then the next year, she had my last baby for the first year of full-time kindergarten. So she's a very special person. She's a great teacher, great-grandmother, great woman, and she'll be very missed. And Marsha Cunningham had my baby, too, for speech. And now she's 16, and she's just fine. Anne Maloney, it was great working with you, too. I don't know all of you that are retiring, but you're all just awesome people. Thank you very much.
All right. And I would just like to add a few comments. I've tried to write it down as we went through the list, because there are, it's a big list this year, I think. But definitely for all the high school staff, it's very obvious how loved you all were and are and will be missed. I would also like to point out, I know Mr. Dudak mentioned that Madame will be, was nominated most likely to travel the world. And my little note that I have here was that she had traveled the world and taken the students with her. And I don't know if everyone knows that or, or ever got the chance to go travel with her. But I think, and maybe she'll talk about it when she gets a chance to speak, maybe it was every other year or every four years, the trips that she gave to our kids are something they will always remember, too. And there were many. So I hope, Madame, that you will speak about that when we open your mic up. The middle school staff, again, the mentors that we're losing in our district this year. The years combined of service won't ever be able to be replaced. Millville Elementary, I know we already said goodbye to Greenie, but, and I do wish she was here today, because he really kept that building looking brand-new. And I know we have good replacements and good people, but there are some people that can't be replaced in that aspect where, I, Greenie treated it like it was his house, and the maintenance and the upkeep was just always a priority for him. And it's the town of Millville that benefited from that. It's our students and beyond. So he will always be remembered for that. Mrs. O'Neill not only knew everyone, every student, every parent that walked in that building. We didn't need cameras in that building because she could tell you if that person belonged there or not. But she also knows people by voice. When you call, she knows who she's talking to. As many times as I've called, and I'm like, "Hi, it's Erin Vinoco," and she already knew. She already knew it was my voice on the other end. And I know that that was just it. I think Ms. Schaefer used the word "gatekeeper," and that is a very accurate description. And I think Mrs. Spont, that obviously the love that's on this meeting for you is 25 times bigger than that. I think our room would have been filled tonight if we were able to be together. So I know that I speak for everyone when I say I hope you feel that love and connection, even in this space that we are in. And with that, I'd like to open this up to And with that, I'd like to open this up to each retiree. We typically ask that the retirees would give us a book, the name of their book that they, they love and that they would like to see carried on through the school of their choice. So if you're ready to speak for that, or just tell us, you know, about your time here, we'd love to hear what your plans are for retirement too. I'm not sure what order we want to go in. I, I don't know if Jessie can open your mics, or if someone wants to volunteer to go first, that would be great too. And so please let us know your book, your book title, and, you know, the reason you chose it, and then, of course, anything else you want to say. So I'll go with Madame first. She, she's just in the center of my screen raising her hand.
Bonjour. The book I chose is called The Little Prince, or in French, Le Petit Prince, by Antoine Saint-Exupéry. And it's a book that we used to read in my French four classes every year. The stories' wonderful themes are applicable to all ages. The themes include friendship, love, imagination, and self-sacrifice, which are particularly meaningful today. I quote the fox who shares the secret with the little prince. He says, "It is only with the heart that one can see rightly. What is essential is invisible to the eye." And so this book has a lot of meaning to me, and it's also had, obviously has an English version. And I'd love to see the Frederick Cartman Middle School have this book in its library. Also, I took a total of six trips to France over, it was every other year. And I took everywhere, anywhere from 12 kids to 21 people. The trips were absolutely amazing. I would choose different itineraries every time, although I did the same itinerary, I must say twice, because it was my favorite. It was the itinerary from Paris to Versailles, and then out west to Normandy, to see Omaha Beach and World War II history. The kids would come back with sand from Juneau Beach, Omaha Beach, and give it to their history teachers. And I will, I will miss those trips tremendously. We would go for nine days. My last trip was in 2016. I took a group to Canada. And I thought, with the way things are today, it would be a safer bet to do something closer to home. And so that was a wonderful trip as well. We did Quebec and Montreal. I brought kids who would take, took French, kids who took Spanish. We had a mix of kids. So it was really, it was a great experience to get them out to see the world. And we'll miss that tremendously. The planning was tough, but, you know, the passports, make sure everybody had their papers and all. But it was, those were the best experiences of my life, would be to see the kids' faces light up when they see the Eiffel Tower for the first time, or, or the Art of Triumph, or the Louisville Museum. It was an amazing experience, and I really will miss that. And I hope that my colleagues will continue to bring kids abroad when, when that time comes again, or, or even go back to Canada. It's beautiful. Thank you so much. I have a little something if I could. I'd like to read a little thank you. Could I do that?
Of course, please do.
Okay, thank you. "As life has kept us all so busy, I have had little time to think about retirement." I'm going to cry, sorry. "The distractions have been many, but the truth is, it's very close. And it's time for me to sit down and think about this new chapter of my life." "But before I settle into a new routine, I'd like to thank the entire BMR family for an incredibly fulfilling 25 years. Thank you to my principals, assistant principals, superintendents, and school committee members from over the years for their genuine caring about the kids we taught. Thank you to my colleagues and aides, current and retired, who have acted as cheerleaders, sounding boards, and supporters every single day. Thank you to the tech department for rapidly resolving my many computer issues. Thank you to our clerical workers, custodians, and lunch ladies for making my school life orderly and comfortable. Thank you to my students, who sometimes taught me as much as I taught them. And finally, thank you to my children and my loved ones, who have been patient with the time I have needed to spend at home doing my schoolwork. I know most of you well enough to be certain that your resilience, grit, and compassion will sustain you in the continuing challenging times ahead. I will miss you all so much. Thank you."
Thank you very much. That was very heartfelt. And I think it goes without saying, but it should be said that you will be missed as much as you're expressing that you will miss them too. Do I, is there a volunteer for the next retiree? I can see Mrs. Cunningham, who I did not mean to leave out of my Millville Elementary spot. I just felt like I was talking too long. But I would also be remiss if I didn't mention all your time and energy in, in the Millville Elementary building. Would you want to share the book that you chose with us? There you go. Thank you.
Well, that was a hard act to follow, Madame. I'm sorry. I'll be short and sweet, but I chose the book. It's called Before You Sleep, and it's a book of gratitude. And it's written by a colleague and a friend. She's a speech pathologist, and she worked at Millville Elementary School as a speech pathologist and as a team chairperson. It's written by Annie Romano, and it's a book, How to Help Calm All Your Senses Before You Turn In for the Night. It talks about sights and sounds and smells and all the kinds of things that you have to let go of to relax. And that's what I hope to do in retirement. I hope to relax. I had a great time working in Blackstone Millville School Department. I'm going to miss everybody and miss all the children, and, but it's been a great ride. And in some ways, I'm really sad to see it end, but I'm looking forward to what plays ahead. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. And will that book be in Millville? Did you say Millville?
Yes, it'll be in the Millville Library, yes.
Great, thank you so much. And Anne, would you like to share your book with us?
Yes, I don't have it with me. I do have a copy, but it's called Brave by, I can't remember her first name, McAnulty, I think. And it's, it just has vignettes of children being brave under different circumstances. Not a lot of words, but it's, it just, you know, a child who is undergoing chemo, a child who's being picked on, someone sticking up for them. Just, and it ends with a little boy being brave enough to go on stage. And I thought it resonated during these times when the children have been called upon to be so brave and, and just do amazing things. So I, that's why I chose that book. And thank you to everyone at Blackstone Millville. It has been, I've been blessed to be here and work with such hard-working, dedicated, passionate, compassionate colleagues. It's been wonderful, and especially to my kindergarten friends. Love you all. Thank you. I'm well done.
And they are all here for you tonight. Oh, that's cute. And Anne Maloney, Ms. Maloney, we have left here on, definitely, definitely, your time has been spent in many buildings, and the students that you've been able to assist. I know it was mentioned that the family already reached out to you, but do you want to share with us your book and any future plans? You're still on mute.
Oh, there we go. Hi, everyone. The book I chose is called Wild Robot by Peter Brown. And I chose it because it was one of the books I read with the student that I, that I had for the last two years. We read it in eighth grade. And it's kind of a book about acceptance. The robot gets lost on this island, and all the animals, all the wild animals on the island, just, they befriend him and they become friends. So it's kind of about acceptance. It was, and then there's a second, a second one is The Wild Robot Escapes. So I, I thought they were great. The student I had really loved them, so I figured, and I, mine's going to go to, I think, to AFM, to the AFM JFK Library. I don't even know what to say. If I say too much, I know I'm going to cry, so I've met so many. I've worked with so many wonderful teachers. And Paris, Shannon. And administration principals, secretaries. It's been a great, great 20 years. That's all I can say. I am going to spend most of my time probably with my grandchildren. And I just, I, I can't even say anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. I think everyone here feels, feels this emotion tonight, so it's, it's such a great turnout. We appreciate all of you. You will all be missed. And I, I don't think I missed anyone that is here, correct? If I did, please, like, start jumping up and down. Did I get everyone, Jason?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. I tried to keep track, because I didn't want to do that up on purpose with things. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the retirees or add any additional?
Yeah. Erin, I would like to, if I can take a minute, and I apologize that I can't see you face-to-face, but hopefully you can hear me now and not the other meeting I was also at. But I would like to thank everybody for their service to this district. It really is a special place because of special people like these. And while I don't know everyone sitting around the Zoom meeting today, I have had the pleasure of interacting with many of you, and your commitment and dedication to this district make it really a unique and community feeling, a family feeling, that people soon don't forget when they move on. And so hopefully you won't forget us as you go on to your next adventures. But I do thank you all very much for your service, and truly, truly appreciate what you've given to Blackstone and Millville.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Jane.
Anyone else? I'm not trying to drag it on. There's just a lot of you here, so I want to make sure everyone has the opportunity. All right, so I think with that being said, we'll move forward. And of course, if anyone needs to exit now, that's totally fine. We don't take it personal. Sometimes we sit here longer than we intend to also, so. But thank you very much for, for being here for your fellow coworkers this evening. Next on the agenda, we have review and approve school committee calendar, which everyone had in their packet. And I think we're just approving the meeting dates and workshop dates that were printed out here. Are there any major changes to that?
No, it's a similar structure to this year's. We just want to make sure we can get the committee meetings posted up on the website for next, for our next school year.
Erin, and we need to remind everyone that, that the district posting of our meetings on the website is our official posting, not what's at town halls, but what is on our website is our official school committee posting.
Right, but still 48 hours prior, but looking for our school, our meeting information, you should always look to our website first. And that is, like Jane just pointed out, the official 48-hour posting for us, even if it's posted at a town a little later. As long as we hit our website, we're meeting the requirements. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the calendar, the school committee calendar for 2020, 2021, as received in our packets. Does anyone want to make that motion?
I'm moved.
Tammy.
Tammy. And seconded by Tara. Any discussion? I think I can get out of this. Okay, and all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Say nay.
I'm an aye. I couldn't unmute.
Okay, so that, that school committee calendar is approved as, as presented to us in our packet for the 2021 school year. The only question I have for Jason, which I, I just feel like, because I'm looking at a calendar, I should ask this question. Are we now looking at changing the school calendar once again, as we just approved the September 14th?
We, we are. I didn't bring it. No, I'm glad you asked. I intentionally didn't bring it forward, because with the rapid changes that are happening at the state level, I'm afraid we'll change it back, and it will change again.
I was just asking, because I had, like I said, calendar in front of me, and I thought that's what that was first.
Yeah, as you know, the governor announced a state holiday and then canceled the state holiday. So I, I figured, well, let's, let's give everybody at, at kind of that level some time to figure out what direction they want to move in, and then we can adjust our calendar accordingly.
Good idea, okay. So next on the agenda is a resolution to support state funding for COVID-19 supplies.
Yeah, Erin, I think you can turn that over to Tara, because I think she has the wording and the document that was sent out by a group of regional school association interested parties. So if Tara can take that part, I think she can explain this. Thank you.
Sorry, my email is closed. I can't get it in front of me right now. Just give me a second.
You want to come back to that after? We could just move forward to the reporter superintendent.
Yeah.
So we'll move back, we'll return to school committee section C. Move on to Jason, reporter superintendent.
Good evening, everybody, again. Nice to see so many, so many friends and teammates here. Tonight, we are going to hear a very important update from Donna Stone in our portion of a graduate team. As many of you might remember, we have been hard at work for about a year on really teasing out this idea around what does it mean to be a graduate of BMR? And while we know there are, you know, very specific, you know, standards and, standards and skills and concepts and things we teach, we know that that's only one piece of the work, right? And our focus is really in developing the whole child. And so one of the things that we embarked upon this year was really teasing out, what are those pieces? What are those attributes that we value most, that we want every graduate from Blackstone Millville Regional High School, every graduate from our system to really possess? And so we've been working with Donna Stone, and she has put a team together. Some of you have been serving on this team, which has been wonderful, and really looking at the different aspects of 21st century learning, and really having some very deep conversations around, you know, what do our kids need to be prepared for as they step off our campus and enter into college career? And, or military, for that matter. And so with that, I'm going to actually tee it, tee it off and hand it over to Donna, who's going to take the committee and the community through the very good work of the portion of a graduate committee, and share with folks kind of where we landed at the end of all of this. So Donna, if you want to take it away?
Thank you very much. It's been just over a year since the, my last time presenting to the school committee. I'm glad to be welcomed back. I'm going to be sharing my screen with all of you to kind of walk through a presentation that I put together, and Dr. Shayna Fox Norwitz, who is my colleague, um, my colleague and, uh, associate through this work at New England Base Camp. Uh, will also be jumping in to share some of the work that's happening now. So please bear with me. I practiced this. Okay. I will be very proud of myself if I do this. How's that? Everyone? Can everyone see my screen?
Excellent job.
Okay.
Yes, I can see.
So about a year ago, thank you. Um, about a year ago, I presented to the school committee on the idea of creating a portrait of a graduate for the Blackstone Millville Regional, uh, School District. From that time, uh, Dr. Del Falco and I worked together to create a team that would go through what was a very long year process. And I really want to call out the people who assisted in this work. First, it started with our students. They stuck with this process throughout the year. They were engaged. Um, they helped inform us in what was, uh, what they felt were, were the competencies and the responsibilities that graduates should have. So I wish to thank Cassandra Demote, Jake Purinton, Hannah Al Malali, and Jacob Chaplin. I am sure that Dr. Del Falco will be sharing this presentation with all of you. And it would be wonderful for you to read the quotes that the students had about the process of the portrait of a graduate. In addition, we had Dr. Jenny Chan Remka, Principal Tanya Kurt-Hord, and Principal Mike Dudek, who understood from the beginning that though we were talking about a portrait of a graduate, we weren't just talking about our seniors. We were talking about our kindergartners, our sixth graders, our eighth graders, and all of the students at BMR. And in this very crazy, busy time, we had teachers who, uh, showed up and followed up in each of our meetings. I wish to thank Carol Conti, Hillary Roberge, and Jeffrey Curran for their insight, um, in this process and for their engagement as well. And last but not least, we could not have done this work without community support in our school committee. And so I wish to thank, uh, school committee member Karen Vernon and school committee member Erin Byon, I'm, I'm so sorry, Erin. Finako, um, for their assistance and of course, the leadership of, uh, Dr. Del Falco in this work. So thank you. And Erin, I'm sorry, I just massacred your last name. So the question really is, like, what is a portrait of a graduate? So a portrait of a graduate is a North Star, which drives transformation of our traditional school model. Developing a portrait of a graduate pushes districts to articulate the full range of outcomes they want for their graduates. And then work backwards from there to build a school model that meets the identified, identified outcomes. So why do districts do this? Why do they need to establish a portrait of a graduate? Which is a really good question. We do it for these guys. In order for all students to reach their potential, high school students must be intentionally, high schools must be intentionally designed to hold all students to high expectations. Through the development and use of a portrait of a graduate, high schools can embrace and expand the definition of student success. One that they can ensure with that students are fully equipped with core academic knowledge and skills as well as a range of other competencies that we all need to be successful in education, work, and life. The idea of having a plan at BM, for BMR graduates and then the backwards design of instructional environments for all grade levels ensures that students graduate with the competencies they need to be successful in their life choices. Thank you, Dr. Chan Remka, for assisting me on this slide and sending these amazing pictures. So how does the community help? How is the community part of the portrait of a graduate process? This is another great question because even though there is a roadmap for the development of a project, a portrait of a graduate, each district's needs are different. And the path is personal. And we found that throughout, uh, our process over the last year. We had a recipe to follow, but then as we engaged in the work, we knew what paths we need to take to be successful. The journey started over a year ago, as I have said, when I first presented to the school committee and the community. The team met nearly every month and worked tirelessly to create the portrait of a Blackstone Millville Regional Graduate. And now I'll walk you through that process. Before initiating the portrait of a graduate process, the team needed to intentionally create awareness of the why change was necessary for shaping the future direction of our schools. These conversations included deep discussions stemming from these questions. How the world and society was changing. What our changing workforce needs were. And how we can redesign educational experiences to best prepare our students to meaningfully compete and, I apologize. To, um, how we can design educational experiences to best prepare our students to meaningfully complete and contribute in the 21st century. So we had deep conversations about what it meant to be part of the workforce of the 21st century and how that had changed greatly for some of us who have been in the workforce for a long time. And then our focus really was on our students who were just entering college or just entering the workforce. The committee took part in a day-long needs assessment. We needed to start off with where we were and what our schools were offering. They visited schools and completed a comprehensive school and classroom level walkthrough. We visited all BMR schools because a primary driver of the portrait of a graduate work is to transform the educational experience for all students. So they are prepared to meet the demands of the 21st century. In addition, the design team members reviewed books, articles, and videos to build their background knowledge and understanding about the new global economy and its impact on education and and the 21st century competencies. I actually assigned homework to them at each and every meeting. Once we knew where we wanted to go and from which we were to start, the team was tasked with drafting a prioritized list of competencies, including 21st century skills, mindsets, mindsets, and literacies. Questions we discussed included, what do we want students to be able to do when they leave school? What learning experiences do they need to reach these goals? What do we need to do in the classroom and schoolwide to create those experiences? And what supports do teachers, principals, and other staff need to create such classrooms and experiences? From that, we worked towards these competencies. These are the skills the team found to be essential for BMR students to succeed in school and the workplace. The team felt these competencies would have the biggest impact in terms of setting BMR students apart when applying for school and/or starting their careers. Overall, the product, uh, the portrait of a graduate asks that BMR graduates are leaders. It asks us to make sure that our graduates are leaders. And to be a leader, students must have exposure, time, and opportunity to grow in these core competencies. Communication, which is the practice of conveying ideas quickly and clearly. Collaboration, which is the skill that requires us to work together to achieve a common goal. Civic responsibility, which means active participation in public life and our community. Creativity is the practice of thinking outside the box, what we ask our students to do. And critical thinking is the practice of solving problems among other qualities. So we put our artistic talents to work here. After much, much discussion, we, with our competencies, we had decided that we needed to make a visual representation of those competencies. I have to say, this was probably one of the most fun meetings that we had. Paper and crayons and markers and the computer. We set off in groups to create these visual representations. We went from paper to portrait. The idea was that BMR's portrait of a graduate would be an illustration that articulates the school's community's aspirations for all students. Of which the aspiration of us being artistically inclined was not really one of those things. But I'm very thankful that Principal, uh, Dudek was able to work with a, uh, teacher at the high school to help create some visual renditions, uh, from paper to the computer. So these are inspired and informed by feedback from stakeholders and the team members of the portrait of, of a graduate process. The illustrations, whether they are these or the ones that are chosen later on down the, the line, will become the district's visual representation of its priority goals for teaching and learning. In essence, this illustration will become the foundational icon that represents the entire school community's collective vision for its students. So that is all good and well. We did a lot of talking, a lot of researching, reading, watching videos, really digging in deep into what we needed our graduates to have. But how do you go from the portrait to actual practice? So, um, what's, what, what are the steps? Like, what did we need to do to ensure that this portrait of a graduate was brought to fruition? And a good place for that to start is right in the schools. So teams should determine in collaboration with colleagues when students work on these skills and under what time period. The idea is, is that this isn't isolated in our high schools, but that we are real, bringing these competencies into our kindergarten classrooms, into our middle schools, classrooms, and into our high schools. It's essential that students understand the skills that are being taught. Um, that they understand that these skills will develop over time. And we ask that children really are able to articulate the fact that they know what they're learning, what's the relevancy, what's the importance of this? Um, how it fits into their learning as a whole, and also how it affects their thinking. Um, like, can we predict, predict from when they would actually be able to use these competencies, these habits of success in future learning and in their life? So as we move forward with the idea around portrait to practice, we think about the continuous professional growth and collaborative conversations that will be necessary so that we are able to update strategies that are already in use, right? We're not reinventing the wheel here. Amazing things are happening in our classrooms. But how can we share those, uh, skills and craft and also be able to build upon that and add additional strategies that support those competencies across our grade levels? Eventually, it will be second nature to incorporate those three Ws that I mentioned on the last slide into our instruction. So what? Now what? And how is it affecting our learning? Um, we've already started, uh, that process by looking at some of the work that's already happening in our schools. As a team, we looked at the applied learning opportunities that students engaged in this year. We sort feedback, uh, from students and from teachers. We asked, how can we backward design portfolio work to better prepare students to succeed in their applied learning projects? And we took a really good look at what traditional instruction looks like and what the intent of applied learning um, had in, in mind, uh, for the portfolio work that was happening at the high school. By focusing on the required end result, the backwards design allows the educator to address what the student needs to learn and what data can be collected to show that the end goals has been achieved. Backwards design helps teachers create courses and units that are focused on the goal, the learning, rather than on the process, which is the teaching. And now I'm going to ask Dr. Shana Fox Norwitz, who already started this process, uh, with the high school, to talk a little bit about the professional development that has already incurred, uh, occurred in, uh, Blackstone Millville. Thank you, Shana.
Thank you. So can you just click for me, Donna? Because you have control.
I'm on it.
Uh, so the first step this year was that, uh, teachers and, go back one, sorry. Teachers and students, um, engaged in the authentic assessment process. So the authentic assessments actually took place of the midterm and final exams this year. And they were really more project-based opportunities for students to demonstrate their knowledge and skills. And so after that actually happened, we took some surveys, um, from the teachers to see how the process was, to get their feedback on how it went for the students, what were some of the areas that we want to try to repeat? What were some of the areas that we could maybe tweak a little bit to get better? So if you could click to the next one. We then took all of that survey information, um, and sorted through it and kind of figured out what were the strengths and weaknesses, not just, um, for teachers, but also for students. So there were things that made students happy, like they had choice sometimes on the projects. Um, teachers expressed that students who were traditionally poor test takers happened to do much better on these types of exams when it wasn't necessarily a multiple choice type of assessment. Um, there was opportunity for reflection. The downsides there were really, um, stressed, right? Because what ended up happening this year is authentic assessments were happening during the week that finals or midterms would happen. So students had multiple projects that they were working on all at the same time. So one of the ways that we thought would help to, you know, easily solve that and address some of the other things would to be to actually use a portfolio system to then, um, kind of streamline some of these and have students collect their actual assessments throughout the semester or the entire school year and put them in a portfolio to present um, as part of their midterm or their final. So if you could just click to the next one. So we started this year, uh, with, uh, PD, with the teachers, um, where we actually looked at the survey data. They helped to kind of categorize, sort, and kind of then rank what they felt were the things that we had to make sure that we focused on. We also looked at rubrics that teachers were already utilizing in the assessments in their classes. Um, and we kind of combined some of those together to see which pieces we could actually utilize to put together a rubric that would actually help us to assess, uh, the portfolios. And so we're in the very, very beginning of kind of establishing that system. Uh, we haven't gone all the way through the logistics and things yet, but but we kind of are working to change the way that the teaching and learning is happening in the classroom by addressing it through the assessments that they are participating in. And then I will pass it over to Dr. DeFalco, who was going to talk about some of the next steps for our work, continue here.
Yeah, so we had some lengthy conversations, and I'm going to ask Mike to pitch in and really talk a bit about the high school. I don't know if, oh, there it is, okay. But I wanted to just kind of frame this in the manner that we started with kind of the end result, right? So we know what those attributes are, and we put at the high school a specific kind of way to approach that, specifically looking at assessment. And then Michael talked a little bit about the work that they're doing in the high school around how do you work backwards from there, so that we're doing this work in a more ongoing manner to really address the critical thinking instructional focus that's at the high school. But we know we need to back this up even further in thinking about our youngest learners, specifically those at our elementary schools, the middle and elementary school, and really have some very serious conversations about how do we approach this work at a very different level? And so, what I mean by that is it's, in some aspects, it's almost easier to articulate these attributes to a group of, you know, high school students where they can really wrap their heads fairly easy around those concepts. But when we start thinking about our kindergarten, first, second, third, you know, et cetera, it can become a little more complicated. And so, what we are going to be doing moving forward is thinking about how do we leverage our new literacy program specifically as a way for doing that work? How do we use that as kind of a springboard to help really accelerate the preparedness of our students in those areas? Those areas being those attributes of a graduate that we're looking for at BMR, to make sure that the kids are ready to take that on? Because we know we can't just start that work when the students walk through the doors of the high school their freshman year. And so, we're looking specifically at our work around literacy, and we're thinking about how do we engage our students in real, deep, meaningful work, specifically around reading and writing, that we know is going to take a very significant level of thinking and critical thinking specifically. So, we're excited to be engaging in those conversations at the other levels. And I think Mike will be able to really articulate very concretely how they're really launching this work at the high school.
So, thank you, Dr. DeFalco. So we have been in a lot of conversations and reflection on, how do we move forward at the high school? I think all of you know that we've embedded in some work to discuss authentic assessments. How do we engage all learners, allow them to be able to showcase what they know through varied assessments? And the alignment happening now is really streamlined with the ILT work that we've been doing. And I know all buildings are really focused in on the critical thinking and problem-solving aspects of the work. But now looking at portfolio-style assessments, were we able to sprinkle, you know, all assessments? You know, we're not just looking at project-based learning, but, you know, anything that would model learning for a student where they would feel comfortable enough to be able to articulate and explain, you know, through standards and skills, what it is that they're being able to be asked for. So, in this work, and I'm excited about our Portrait of a Graduate work that we've been able to do, articulating our goals. And essentially, what we've been able to do is really articulate what are the expected outcomes for students by the time they graduate? So we know that. So, we need to align those expectations to the specific assessments that we want students to be able to produce. And from there, really identifying and looking at the instructional methods and practices to be able to align to that. I think that is, quite honestly, I think the struggle that some of our students had was that, you know, we had authentic assessments. They were asked to produce those twice a year. Some students struggled with that a bit. But the question for us now to really reflect on is how does our instructional methods and daily learning experiences align to those assessments, which align to the core values, which align to what we want all of our graduates to be able to produce and be essentially by the time they graduate? So that's a little bit of the work that we've been doing. You know, we're going to be working with Shana a bit more and Carrie Purcell to really align that ILT work with our portfolio assessments and be able to streamline that as much as we can to, again, improve the teaching and learning. But I think that we definitely have a solid foundation in knowing what we want or where we want our students to be.
Mike, can I just add to that? That'd be okay? So one of the things that Mike and I have talked a lot about, and I know, Shana, you and Donna and I have also mentioned this in quite a few conversations. When we think about the assessment piece of the work, and Mike was articulated this a few minutes ago, you know, it's not a zero-sum game. It's not either authentic assessment or traditional test, right? Like, what we're trying to do is figure out how do we integrate this ongoing type of assessment so that students are able to really show what they know in a deep and meaningful way, but also develop some of those test-taking skills that they need? And so, it's interesting, because when we started this work, there were conversations across the faculty around, you know, this like black or white, right? We either do like the bubble sheets and the multiple choice, or we do authentic assessment. And we really started to shift the narrative around. But shouldn't our assessments all be authentic? I mean, shouldn't we be measuring student learning in a real meaningful way to them while still embedding some of those other, you know, kind of more traditional, you know, ways kids need to be assessed in addition to that? So, for us, it's really about looking at the integration, because as you know, the high school, their instructional focus is critical thinking. That's what they're really working on across all grades and all content areas. So, as we continue to move down that path, and Mike does with his instructional leadership team and the support of Shana and Donna, you know, I think that we can expect to see a stronger, more authentic, kind of organic way that kids are going to be showing, students will be showing what they've learned.
Yeah, and just to add, I think you put that well, Jason, but just to add, this will be a consistent practice throughout the school year. This wouldn't be, you know, quarterly or, you know, once every, you know, semester. This is going to be a practice where students are going to be able to reflect on the work that they're being able to produce, revise that, and articulate their learning throughout the year. And that product will be a portfolio-style, you know, digital learning style that will be able to showcase their learning. But that would be a yearly product.
And I also, just on the, one of the slides that we were looking at had showed that students who are not traditional test takers, you know, as a strength, they seem to really like that format. I will say, I heard from parents, and, you know, and I don't, by the way, I understand this completely, because we teach kids a very specific way for so long. So those students that have really kind of mastered the art of studying a particular way, taking multiple choice, short answer, open response kind of style questions, some of those kids, some of those students really struggled with this. Because it caused a different, it caused some cognitive dissonance for them in terms of like, they're not used to this, right? So, this, you know, we saw kind of both sides of that continuum. I just want to note that, because that also speaks to the need of having much deeper and more meaningful ways of letting kids show what they know at both the elementary and the middle level. Anybody have any questions? Jane, you're muted. I'm not sure if you have any questions.
Well, thank you. I am going to assume we have some questions. So, anybody have any questions? And I certainly do, but, and everybody's muted, so if you do, you'll have to unmute.
I just, Tammy, I just wanted to say thank you for encompassing that big picture. I think, I think I was one of the people at the beginning of this process that thought, yes, I like the authentic learning piece. I like the project-based learning. I would actually love to see, as we unfold in a year or two, kind of putting in some community service learning pieces to it, but I know that takes a little time to do that. But I thank you to also keeping an eye on that traditional test-taking, because it is still happening at the higher levels as well. So, thank you for all, to all of you for the work that you put in on this. I know how much goes into these things, so thanks very much.
So, anyone else? So I was glad to hear Mike talk a little bit about alignment of how this all fits to the core values, because that's the very first question I wrote down when Donna was talking. It was like, well, how do the, these attributes align with our core values, align with our mission? And I'm glad to hear that that's still a work in progress. So talk a little bit about, I mean, you talked about next steps of aligning the high school, a little bit about, you know, the middle and elementary, but talk about the next step of trying to align all of those pieces. Is this still a formal group that's going to be working? Or it's now more informal and pulling in Carrie as well?
Yeah, so at the high school specifically, and so let me start with this. It's still a work in progress, for sure. At the high school, we are looking at how do we expand upon the instructional leadership team to really get, almost like a subgroup of staff? And I might jump in on this if you feel you'd like to, but getting a subgroup of staff, so we can actually get teachers who are not participating in the instructional leadership team, but feel very passionate about this particular piece of work. So how do we integrate the authentic assessment into the work around critical thinking and our two to three instructional best practices at the high school? And so, at the younger grade levels or the lower grade levels, we are just in our infancy of those conversations, because we, you know, we had Jenny as part of the group and Tawny was part of the group that helped to put all these together. And now we have to kind of work backwards from the high school to see what that's going to look like. One of the things that's really important is, you know, how do we share this information with our community?
Which was going to be my next point. We not only need to work backwards, we need to work outwards. We need to...
Absolutely.
Including the school committee, because for some of us, this is our first run.
Yeah, of that. But our hope is too, when you look at things like our purpose statement, and, you know, you can see that our goal of, you know, preparing kids for college, career, et cetera, I won't recite that now, but, you know, the values of the attributes that the team came up with are really set out to do just that. So Jane, just your question about, like, where does this, you know, my interpretation of your question, kind of how does this fit with our mission and like where we're trying to go? You know, I took a step back and looked at what the team come up with and thought that those are definitely drivers to getting our students to fulfill and getting our system to fulfill the purpose that we've actually, we've formally set out in our blueprint. So I think the work then comes in with the community around kind of the rollout and the launch, and how do we share that information with families? And again, there's another thread to our work with focused schools, because the community involvement and participation in this is one of the major standards that we work on, specifically around our instructional focus, which at the high school is critical thinking, which we're going to measure through these authentic assessments that we're embedding ongoing, that are driven by our, you know, our values or our attributes of a graduate. So it's kind of this, you know, this kind of driving force. But it's getting the community to really kind of wrap their arms around that and having us be able to articulate that in a very simple, you know, kind of way that makes sense to people. Does that answer your question, Jane?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. And thank you to the entire group that worked on that. I know that that continued, well, started in person, continued remotely, and I know that's difficult to do, but certainly a lot of material for us to look at and delve into and move forward with. So that's exciting.
And I'll send to the school committee tomorrow in the weekly update a copy of the PowerPoint.
That'd be great. That would be great.
Donna and Shana, a big thank you to both of you.
Yeah.
You were incredible.
Thank you, Dr. Fox Norwitz. Thank you, Mistel.
Thank you very much.
I appreciated all your time, effort, and energy and all that. You definitely kept us up and about, moving in the right direction.
Great.
Hopefully we'll
Thank you.
See more of you, hopefully.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Okay.
Enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Tara, are you all set, or I can pull it up to you if you...
Yes, I managed to pull it up.
Okay, so we'll go back.
Do you want me to share my screen or do you want me to just read it?
Either way, if you want to share it, that's fine. If Jesse, yeah, you should be able to. We have multiple share.
All right, so pretty much, oh, he has it disabled unless, unless he gives me permission. Pretty much, it was just on the regional schools. There's a Support Mass Regional Schools post, and they were talking about funding all these mandates for COVID-19. So it was kind of some draft language. It's the school committees wanted to vote on it to send to the state. It can go to the governor, the secretary of ed, commissioner of ed, or a couple of the people they recommended sending it to. It's pretty much saying if we're to reopen this fall, it's a responsible school district to do so safely and responsibly. It's responsible of the state to ensure that each school district is able to pay for the enormous additional staffing, transportation, materials, and that the state cannot expect mandatory COVID-19 safety guidelines to be followed without also ensuring that each school district has the funds required to implement guidelines. Therefore, it's requesting that the state would guarantee every school district full reimbursement for whatever COVID-19 expenses are required to follow these eight mandates. So I just wanted to run it by the committee, share it with the committee, see if, you know, something that we wanted to sign and send in from our district.
It's just, oops, sorry.
It's a, it's an actual formal motion in what Tara read, and we can do that and send it off. But we have in our policies that we send things as a group, so we would need to do so as a group. Tammy, you had a comment.
I was going to ask, do we need to vote that before we discuss it?
We need a motion.
Do you need a motion? Yes, so a motion to approve the language.
Approve a resolution to the state regarding funding for COVID-19 supplies.
Like Jane said, so moved.
Okay, moved by Tammy, seconded by Erin. All right, any discussion? Go ahead, Tammy.
So basically, what I've been reading, both on, there's a couple of sites going on that are discussing this. And actually, interestingly, I think one of the people who started the ball rolling on this is someone that, for the last two years at the MAC conference, I have chatted with a lot. And I think it's like Triton Voc Tech or something. And so, from what I understand, the hope is that if we all get together and send this to our representatives, et cetera, that there'll be a lot more power to the resolution as a united front of school committees. And so, in hopes to, you know, we've read the memo, so in hopes to support us financially to get that done.
I will say, Tammy, you've done an excellent job of telling people that the initial memo was summer, was summer school. And while that gives us insight to what might come in the fall, and it does say, "Prepare for these supplies for the fall", what this motion does is say, "We'll prepare for these supplies, but we may not be able to afford these supplies", so...
Or find them.
Or find them. Plexiglas is a new thing. Who knew? Anyone else? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to support the revol, revolution, to support the resolution to send to the state to ask for, uh, backing and support to meet, uh, guidelines associated with, uh, the opening of our schools safely and securely as a result of COVID-19. Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstention? Okay, thank you. We will, um, officially draft something and send it off to our representatives and the governor of the great Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Okay. Uh, Dr. DeFalco, we'll head back to you.
Thanks, Jane. Uh, so, uh, just a brief update on, um, our work, uh, with COVID-19 and specifically around our summer support work. Um, I do want to start out by, uh, just sharing with the, uh, committee in the community that as, uh, and this is relative to our summer work, so I just want to frame it that way. Uh, as, as folks are aware, uh, last week I sent out a video to the community, uh, taking a very strong position around inclusivity and unity. Uh, and I do want the committee to be aware of that, um, and, and, you know, anybody who's tuning into this, um, that in our school system, racism, hate, bigotry has no place, period. And, um, I certainly know that I'm, you know, preaching to the choir, so to speak, with the committee on that. Uh, but we are going to be, uh, process of putting a public statement on our webpage uh, that states just that, that racism has no place here, uh, in BMR. Um, and we'll link, uh, anybody who visits our, uh, webpage to the video, uh, that I had sent out to our community. Um, I'm mentioning that because, um, and I wish Mike was still here to, to share about this, but, um, we, no surprise, I'm sure to our school committee, uh, or our community, um, very quickly, a group of staff at the high school and a group of students got together. Uh, this is staff-led, and they are, uh, putting together a organization called, uh, Chargers for Change, um, that are going to take issues of, uh, racism head-on and, uh, are starting to partner with the, uh, Anti-Defamation League. Um, and, uh, both Mr. Dudik and myself and our leadership team are standing right there with them, uh, to, uh, work with our high school students and our staff and thinking about ways that we can help, uh, in our own way, uh, drive the change forward, um, that is so badly needed across our, across our country. Um, and so, um, I'm very proud of our staff. I'm very proud of the students. Um, this came directly from them, um, and they're going to be doing some work this summer around this, um, and looking to, uh, really put together a strong coalition of students and, and faculty, um, to take this issue, uh, head-on at multiple levels. So, um, I just wanted to share that, uh, that's a very recent, um, unfolding, and I could not be more proud, uh, of Courtney Allen, who actually, uh, is spearheading this, uh, and already has, uh, a coalition, a small coalition put together, uh, of both students and staff. Um, and, uh, she has had direct conversation with both, uh, Mr. Dudik and I. And, um, you know, I just want the community to know that this is a very important issue to us, um, and that we are standing very strong, uh, and firm in our belief. Uh, and Jane, you've said it many times, all means all.
All means all.
That's right. And so, um, I'm, I'm really proud of, of our, uh, of our team here for, for taking such a strong position against something that's so important. Um, and I'm excited to see the work that will unfold in this group over the summer, um, because they're going to be doing some, first some professional developments. Um, and as a leadership team, we're also studying this issue. Uh, and, uh, we will be reading White Fragility as a team, uh, of leaders, um, and having some very difficult, what I, what I envisioned to be some very difficult conversations. Uh, it's a very powerful text. I've read it. Um, it causes, uh, significant reflection. Um, but, uh, that being said, uh, I'm, I'm very proud, uh, of all those involved, in particular the students who, uh, stepped right up to, to this with Ms. Allen to take this issue on, so.
Actually, and before you continue off of that, I was asked by a school committee member if we were going to put out a statement, um, and I had indicated not until we meet, because if we were putting out a statement, it needed to be our statement, not mine or any, any one other person. Um, but I want to be very intentional when I say this. I do not support racism. I do not support bigotry or injustice in society. Uh, I do support people in the service industry who are doing their jobs, uh, and doing it well. There are bad people in every, um, industry and service area that you can, you can imagine in your, in your world. Um, but I work in my world, and in my world, I do not support, um, racism or injustice in any manner. And my world is education, and I believe that's the strongest tool that we have. Um, I truly believe that education is the key to changing all of, uh, the society's ills, um, that are facing us, us this day, including a virus and, and, and including, um, racism and injustice. And, um, and so I work every day because all does mean all. Um, but if we, as a committee, um, feel it's important to make a statement, we certainly can do that as a group. Does anybody want to?
I, I guess I would love to read the statement, because, um, this, this, um, social issue that is going on right now, um, I am sort of torn in the messages that we're receiving. Yes, I am obviously, um, against hate and racism and all of this, but, but I do support the police. Um, there are many fabulous, young, old, in-between, great police officers, um, across this nation. And unfortunately, we are judging all of them as a group, or some people are judging them as a group, just as we're trying to stand up for a different group and being judged there. So I, I support, um, reform, but I, I don't support judging a whole nother group of people based on some bad apples. To, uh, so I, I want to be careful in what I sign or what I, um, put out there, because I, I do not support the line of, uh, rhetoric out there that is asking to defund police and asking to, uh, hate, hate that group of people either, so.
I don't think
That's what I'll say.
Proposing that we would formally put out, uh, defund the police.
But I, I think that, I think
In mind, but I think it's important that we state that all means all.
Yes.
But that's, I think it's very simple, because I, I also asked Jane the same thing, because several school committees have, and MASC has told us to make sure our policies are in line with, um, you know, fair and equitable. But I was very concerned yesterday when this defund police, the people that are being heard now, uh, one of the first things I heard was, and take police out of schools. And I, the, because money should be spent on education, and I'm like, I don't know. I, I don't, our, our kids' last day of school, the high school's last day was the beginning of something new for them. The very last thing they did in school was, was, was going, they were going to start learning a new way of protecting themselves if there was ever a problem in a building. That can't stop. That's just starting. And for people, for someone to say that on the national news last night, I was ill, ill over that. I am ill over the defund the police. I mean, you need the serve and protect, and, and I agree with you, Tammy, that, um, now that group seems to be getting the, you know, the hate as a whole for, for the job that they do, and that's hard. That's hard. But I, I think our statement would be all means all, and, you know, we stand behind that as a community and as a committee. And I, I think, Jason, you just said there was going to be something on our, our, on our website, and then it would, it would bring you to your video. I mean, I think a simple statement there from the committee would also, would be appropriate, you know, on, on all means all.
And I hope I, you know, I, if I could just, Jane, if it's all right, just to
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The work that we are doing, uh, particularly with the high school is, is, um, I don't want to use the term unrelated, but it's, it's not connected to the, the national rhetoric right now. Um, and I, and I also, you, from the perspective of law enforcement, that's, that's not in our lane. I mean, that isn't the, that's not the work that I'm talking about. Um, we're talking about, you know, unchecked bias. We're talking about implicit bias. Um, you know, those types of topics, you know, microaggressions, things that we don't even realize we're doing that we're doing. We don't mean, you know, we're all well-intentioned. Nobody means it. But it, you know, it's that type of education that we're, we're doing, uh, so that when our students, I've heard from alumni, as a matter of fact, already, I've got, I've received a notification from, uh, two alumni who graduated in 2008, saying, um, you know, basically, I'm paraphrasing, but, you know, I know that you don't know us, but, you know, we graduated in 2008. We had a wonderful experience. We love, you know, BMR. It was, it was fantastic, but, but boy, were we all prepared when we stepped onto a college campus and saw so many black and brown people and, and from all corners of our, of our world. We just didn't know, you know, we, we didn't know what to, you know, expect, and we didn't feel ready for that. That's the type of work we're talking about in terms of, you know, really getting a deeper understanding uh, around diversity and our place in that. Um, I think, you know, predominantly as white people, it's, it's hard for white people to talk about race. It just is. And, um, and people may not all agree with that. I feel strongly about it. Um, and I know that, uh, many of our alum do. I know that our administration, our leadership team does, uh, and our students do. And so, uh, when I'm referring to doing work in this area, that's the work I'm talking about. I don't want to confuse it with other things that are happening right now. Uh, and I do want to say very, um, very strongly and publicly, uh, I'm not in favor of, of removing, uh, SROs from our schools. Um, I think, um, the two SROs, though, are one from Millville and from Blackstone that we work with are integral to supporting our students. They've been incredibly helpful in so many ways, as, as have our local police departments. We work very closely with both Blackstone and Millville Police Department. And, and I would, I would also say outside of BMR, in other districts where I was either a principal or served as deputy superintendent, I've never worked in a place where we haven't had to have very strong and positive relationships with our local police. And Jane, you're right, uh, in every industry, there are really solid employees, and there are people that should be doing something else and moving on to other opportunities. That's not any different from education, from law enforcement, from medicine, from fill in the blank. So.
I think, Jason, were, were we together when we listened to Dr. Derek Gay?
Yes.
At the MASC. Jane, were you there too?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So I, as, as this has been unfolding, I've sort of been thinking about that, because I know that the three of us left that keynote address thinking, oh, I didn't think of that, that way, you know, and I, he had a lot of sort of everyday experiences, um, that we thought, and, and maybe not as much for Jason, because he has some, a different experience. Um, but I, I think those are the things to make people aware of, and I think that goes along with what you're saying, Jason, you know, just, some things just happen naturally that, as white people, we, we can't help how it goes in the, in, in how it happens, but we can help the, how it's perceived or, or that kind of stuff. And I, I think that's, that's super important.
Yeah, and that's what we're talking about.
I think it's just, uh, for, for me, it's so crazy right now, and I, I, I do like all. But apparently that's not, uh, to me, I haven't been getting a good vibe from certain people when you say all. So that's all I'll say on that, but thank you.
Okay, to move on?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, we, uh, alongside of, uh, some of the work in that area, uh, we are in the midst of putting together, um, and we're really excited, uh, a, the first time, a very robust tutoring program, um, at all levels, uh, elementary, middle, high school. Uh, in a moment, I'll kick it over to Jill, and she can explain what this is going to look like for our students with special needs, because we want to make sure that we're working diligently with those youngsters too. Not just students that are participating in the ESY, but our students that, that are not, but they need that extra support, uh, but that, you know, may qualify or do qualify for an individual education plan. Uh, but also for our general education students, the students that just need, you know, a little bit more. Um, and so, um, I'm excited to share that at the elementary level, we have identified, uh, the standard skills and concepts that the kids need as prerequisite skills before entering the next grade. And we're going to spend, uh, five weeks this summer, from July 6th to the, uh, end of, uh, August 7th, working with small groups of students remotely. Uh, we're in the converse, in the midst of conversations with parents now, um, gauging parent interest. Um, but we have a, we have a couple of hundred students that we're trying to engage in this work. We want our students to feel really prepared to step back into our, our schools, whatever that ends up looking like. And, you know, it's, it's interesting, because often summer is about like, you know, kind of makeup work. Let's kind of, you know, finish up what we didn't do in this, you know, in the, in the winter, in the spring, and, um, and then kind of have a fresh start, right? Fresh, clean slate in the fall. While we'll do a little bit of that work, the crux of the program at the elementary level is really about making sure kids step in feeling ready. So when they're looking at adding or subtracting fractions or different denominators as a new skill, well, guess what? The kids will have actually started to practice that already, uh, over the summer months. Um, and so, um, our instructional coach, uh, Mary Vaughn, has done just incredible work at the elementary level, partnering with the teachers at every grade level to identify those skills. Um, so we're excited. We're starting the teacher recruitment. Um, we, we purposely waited on the teacher recruitment piece to see how many kids we'd have. Um, you know, students we'd have engaged, but, you know, I can tell you, for instance, at the complex, we have a hundred students on that list. The JAFM complex that we're trying to target, um, and get engaged in this work. At the secondary level, uh, Jeff Kerr and our instructional coach has also been working, uh, to do something really, uh, quite similar, but really get kind of two bites of the apple. So it's interesting. So, um, we're looking at what are the key standard skills and concepts that the students that have been identified for this missed, right? Say in seventh grade math. What were those like, three or four things that they really needed to get that they didn't get? But then, as we look forward into eighth grade math, what are those, what are those entry-level, those prerequisite skills? Because they could be different, that we want to make sure the kids are exposed to before they step in. Uh, there's a little bit of a difference there that, from the elementary to secondary level, because as you know, when you get into middle, high school, uh, high school specifically, um, they're really specific courses, right? It's not just, you know, fifth grade math. It's Algebra I, right? So they're like, they're very specific things that kids need to do, um, with that coursework. So, um, a big shout out to both Jeff and Mary that are hard at work with our principals. Um, they are coordinating this, uh, right now for us, um, and are in the process of recruiting, uh, getting the student list done, and then recruiting the, um, recruiting the staff. Uh, embedded in all of this will be our summer reading. So, um, we're, again, so that kids feel that sense of preparedness and success before we even start the school year. Uh, at the secondary level, we'll be working with the students on their summer reading book. So they'll be having a book club, um, with their tutors around the summer reading texts, so that, you know, you think about it, you walk in and, you know, right from the gate, these kids are able to hand in their summer, their summer work. They're able to have, uh, really meaningful conversations about the text and are scrambling to read it at the last minute. But they're going to be really prepared. So we're excited about that and being able to offer that. We're also applying for a grant, um, for, um, hopefully we'll, we'll, uh, we'll get it. But, uh, applying for a grant through the Department of Education for, um, some vacation enrichment camps, looking specifically at, uh, you know, December, February and April, and seeing if there's interest in our community and in our students to be able to, for award of the grant, runs some, uh, enrichment, uh, type opportunities. And so we're going to be planning that out this summer as well, uh, as we move, uh, through July and August. Jill, do you want to share a bit about, uh, the work we're doing in special ed? Because I know that, uh, there's a lot of planning that's gone into that already.
Sure, absolutely. So, um, we've been working on our summer program as well, um, and we've been adjusting it almost weekly based on the guidance that we're getting from the Department of Ed. Um, this week, I actually attended a webinar with the Associate Commissioner, Russell Johnson, again, um, to review the most recent guidance that came out from the department, um, for the 2012, 2020 Special Ed Services. Um, and I actually have a meeting And I actually have a meeting tomorrow as another follow up with all directors in the state. So as noted in the previous guidance, special education services will look different this summer. And for most students, it is going to be remote. And the reason I say most is because. That we will be looking at and working toward the possibility of some in-person services for our students. With the most significant needs and the most severe needs, to see if it's even feasible. And to even be feasible, there's a lot of proper health and safety precautions that we do need to take. And things like identifying those students with the most severe needs, which we've, you know, have done. We need to identify and hire and onboard people to actually work with those students. We have to identify, and we were just talking about this, and purchase the necessary protective quit equipment to be able to work in person with students again. We have to develop certain protocols around things like screening and monitoring and toileting. And when we have to get physical with students, types of interventions and transportation. So it's not as easy as saying, okay, let's bring some kiddos back, there's a lot of work behind that. So we are looking into it again to see, is this something that we could possibly do for our more severe kiddos in August? Or is it just not feasible at this time, but it's something that we are committed to investigate thoroughly, to see if this is something that it can even happen. For the remainder of our students, we will be moving forward through remote learning, we are definitely starting remote learning for all students. And we are looking at July sixth for that start date as well. We've looked into, we are going to be providing services to students who officially have, you know, ESY as part of their IEP. Those students who during vacations are showing significant regression. Parents are in the process of being contacted for those students. And for those students, we will be writing new remote learning plans, that is one of the. And I'm going to call it a suggestion, they made it very clear at our last meeting that these aren't mandates, but it's something we should be considering. So we will be moving forward with updating our remote learning plans, the plans that we had sent out and completed for parents during our remote learning this year. Those plans again will have that balance of service and instruction as well as the resources and supports as they had before. What's going to be a little bit different about these plans is when we look at ESY for special needs students, we're looking at those specific skills. That show that showed a lot of regression, so the plans will be specifically geared toward that. But that's not to say we're not going to expand that a little bit more, because there's a lot of skills we want kids to still work on. Especially, you know, where we had so many months of that remote learning, kind of filling in those gaps. In addition, we're also working on expanding services for those special education students. Who they may not specifically need, you know, a structured ESY program, but they would benefit from additional services. So we are, we've asked teachers to identify, special education teachers to identify those students. As well as the specific skill focus area. We could have some students who, you know, might need to work a little bit more on writing or reading or the math skills. We might have some students who need to still incorporate those social emotional skills or social, so social skills, so we're working on those as well. When we got the list together, we also forwarded those to the principals, so they can kind of cross reference the students that they've identified for tutoring. Because just because we're proposing some services doesn't mean that they can't participate. In the focused standard based type of tutoring that's going to be taking place and available to all students. And those parents will be contacted as well. We were promised from the Department of Ed some additional guidance coming in the next week. So I'm assuming we're going to have, we may be tweaking things a little bit more, but I think most of the guidance is out there for the remote. We're just waiting for some more information about more of the potential for some in in-person type of services. So our goal in the summer for our special ed student is to definitely continue to provide opportunities for students to engage in learning throughout the summer. We want to be looking at addressing not only those academic areas, but also related services. We have some students who need to continue to move forward with their OTPT and speech and language where appropriate and recommended. But we've also brought on board two of our school psychologists and one of our school adjustment counselors. So we're also looking to incorporate as part of that, some social interaction, even though it's remote. They had some wonderful ideas during our PD day, our, you know, our team of social emotional. Between our school psychologists, our counselors, our school adjustment counselors. But how can we engage kids through the summer and still practice those skills? Because those are skills they're going to need when they come back to school. We're also looking at besides the social skills, but the social emotional, you know, what, you know, kids have a lot of fears right now. I think all of us, there's so much of the unknown, so we want to help prepare them emotionally. For, you know, getting through the summer and to start for the next year. Like I said, there's more guidance coming from the Department of Ed, so we will be, I'm sure, adjusting or tweaking just a little bit more. This guidance is also our out of district students, those programs, I noticed I've been getting a lot of emails recently with the. Most recent updates about the changes that they may be also implementing. Because again, I think initially everyone was just going remote without considering the possibility of anything else. So I know these programs are doing the same. And like I said, we don't know if it's going to happen, but you know, we really are going to look at the consideration for it, is it something that we can do? The other thing that we would love to be able to do, and again, just waiting for that in-person guidance. Is, you know, we had a lot of students who evaluations were put on hold during the school closure. So it would be really nice if we have the opportunity to bring students in for some of that testing to start. So when school starts, we're not going to have to wait, you know, till for months to get this testing done. We can kind of get started on that, so we can get that process moving forward. Any questions on our on our ESY?
Any questions for Jill? I think we had some in the chat, but you answered them as you went along, so.
And I think we're in a great place, and I'm very happy to say what I didn't mention is our our coach, our teaching and learning coach, Jenna Christine, is going to be supporting. This program as well and working on, you know, the extra tutoring for special ed, so it's great to have her on board to her and her expertise. She's a master at finding resources and making things. The stint for kids, so very happy to help have her in this mix.
Yeah, I like the option that that families have too, that they, you know, doesn't just September or June seventeenth, not goodbye. They have options, so that's great. Okay.
Good luck, Jill.
Jason?
So my next item, just a quick update in the return of recovery. Our team, return and recovery team for our district has met twice. And again, it's about twenty different staff members. And we're happy to have Jane and Sarah representing the school committee on that group. We also have leadership from Unit A, Unit C, we have all of our principals, we have our nurses, we have counselors. So we've got a really nice cross section. We've had two larger meetings, kind of really working through what are the essentially the considerations that we should be thinking about. As we start to lay out some plans and wait for guidance from the Department of Education. And recently, I surveyed the group, I think it was Sunday or Monday I sent the survey out. Because now we're starting to get focused and which is kind of right where I was hoping we would be and kind of thinking that we would be. So I'm pleased about that. So the four areas that we are kind of getting ourselves reorganized around. First is, of course, teaching and learning, second is physical and remote environments, so what would those environments need to look like? The third is business and operations, and the fourth is social emotional learning and behavioral support. I will say that I've had an opportunity to speak with teachers, I'm still, as you know, part of my goal is to do a day in a life. And had to pivot that goal and try to do that remotely, which was interesting. I I was able to join a high school class recently, the teacher was there, none of the kids showed, which is unfortunate. I guess they had turned their assignments in and they had emailed the teacher, they didn't need any of the, you know, the additional support on this particular lesson. But it did give me a great opportunity to kind of bend his ear and ask a bunch of questions and get some feedback from him around. His thinking around how to do teaching and learning different in this kind of new world here. So I'm excited to get these groups now kind of, you know, really reorganized, refocused. And I hesitate to say it, but I'll share, we're hearing that perhaps we'll get some more guidance from the commissioner sometime next week. So it would be great if we had that and we can give that guidance to each of the subgroups. So that we can actually spend the time on the on the things that we we need to. So I'm excited about hopefully getting that information out to our subgroups, but. Some very good work is underway. With the return of recovery team. Also, along those same lines, I did send out a three-part survey to families last week. I'm saying that if anyone listening is, you know, hearing this and saying, I didn't get that survey, I think they've been posted on Facebook, which is great. The links to the surveys, they're school specific. So if you have children in multiple schools, you can give multiple pieces of feedback. The survey's in three parts, one is just general feedback about how the district is going pre-COVID nineteen, if I could put that out there. For making the progress that the community is hoping for. The second part of the survey is on remote learning, essentially what worked, what didn't. And then the third part of the survey is around the reopening of schools with some different scenarios. You know, should we, should we, you know, get the mandate that we have to go in one particular direction or another, so. So I'm glad, you know, that that those surveys are out there, we, you know, we, I didn't. I know it was somewhat of a risk, a calculated risk, putting a survey out until we really knew what the models were going to be. But I felt that it would be important for us to get as much information from families upfront that we can. And I also think no news makes people even more nervous than some news that they may not like. Right, but you know, at this point, it's the best that we could put out in terms of information that we have. And I thought better to plan as far in advance as we can. I will also say that the staff received a similar survey, although a little bit different. Yesterday and as of today, last time I checked, we had a hundred and seventy-three responses from the staff survey, which is huge. So I'm really pleased about about that.
I think Aaron has a question.
You're muted, Aaron.
Aaron, you're muted, okay, there you go.
I was going to ask i- if you had a number on responses from the parent survey, but I didn't want to rush you. But you just mentioned the staff one, so how how is the one coming back from last Friday?
So I'm waiting to to check that, I wanted to give it a week before I actually got into the results. Because I know once I get into there, I'm going to start going through everything, so I wanted to give folks a full week before. Started to to do that, I think they, the links were posted on Facebook Monday, Tammy, I think you put them up there for us.
Well, I I was trying to copy them from an email and I wasn't successful, but then a another parent was able to post it to something. But I I find that when you guys post things on on this district page, it's much easier to share. Because on most of the parent town pages that we're a part of, that members are a part of. They tend to be private or they have specific restrictions, so we can't share as easily, especially if it's a link.
Got it.
Like I can copy a picture from the parent page, but I can't share a whole thing like that. So I I typically share it from the district website.
To start. On the district webpage.
Okay.
Yeah, we want as much participation as possible.
Yeah, it's very critical.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll we'll take care of that, and then I can give the committee an update on the numbers tomorrow. But we're pleased to be able to at least get that information out, and I think it will be helpful too for the return and recovery team to get that feedback. So that, you know, the leadership that we have across all levels will be able to delve into the the results of that too.
Jason, as a district, have we. Corresponded in any way with the, and I don't know the name of it off the top of my head, but the state has a. Recovery group that, you know, they're gonna. I guess, help formulate the the directives going forward. And they have an email that has been kind of welcoming thoughts, have we given them any thoughts? Or is that something as part of either the assistant superintendent or superintendent groups that you're? Are you guys building a list?
Boy, have we given. So we actually have, I've sent direct feedback to the Executive Director of the Superintendent Association. And some members on his team, I've actually texted the commissioner personally. And he's he has written me back, I mean, he's great, I mean, within, you know, within a few minutes, he got right back to me. And we've also, so I chair that accountability and assistance group for the commissioner. One of the my colleagues, the superintendent and Bill Ricker, is on the return and recovery team for the state. So we've had some conversations through that venue too. So we've had definitely had a chance to give quite a bit of feedback. The big question that we have, and Matt and I have a call with the commissioner and this superintendents across the state tomorrow. Is around the idea of capacity, I I we need a definition for capacity. Because we keep hearing this idea of, you know, half capacity or, you know, X percent capacity. Well, you know, are they talking about building capacity and your building can only be at half capacity? Well, on a good day, our buildings are at half capacity, folks, I mean, we have a real estate issue, we know that, we have a lot of space. Or are they saying student enrollment, right, which is probably what they're meaning, I don't know. But we're going to, we're going to push pretty hard on getting an answer to that question, because that could really inform some of our planning.
So Tammy, just so you know, I did. Write to the task force using that email, and I will tell you, you don't get a response, you just get a.
I didn't get a response either.
But so I did contact people in the Department of Ed directly with the list of.
I actually originally reached out, no, I I reached out as a as a non-school committee person. In that the original list that came out, and I don't know if it's changed, did not include a nurse, school nurse teacher of any sort. On on their people who are on that, and I thought that was like such a slight. In that they are are health people. I don't know, I didn't, I don't know why they don't have a school nurse, because I'm assuming she's, if if temperatures, I know they've now taken temperatures off the table. Upon entering, but I would think those folks, nurse teachers would be part of what we're doing there. You know, who's deciding if somebody's sick or not, you know. But.
We have three.
I did not get a response.
Just so you know, Tammy.
No, I I appreciate that, and I think it's important, I mean, there, I just think that health piece is important. When you're talking about a pandemic based on a virus.
To Jason's point, I think you're you're right, Tammy, as well. The two most important things that we need to know are what do they mean by capacity with respect to how many students we can have in? And then what are the parameters that are going to be set for allowing kids in and dealing with the health issues? So one of the big questions that we've been looking at, and Jason and I have been meeting with our nurses and going over our facilities. And saying, what, you know, we've been told the nurses are going to need a quarantined area. A quarantine room for anyone that's identified. Well, what does, what constitutes a quarantined area? Is that a thick plastic curtain, is that a separate room? Those.
They're out in the truck ship.
Exactly, well. Not a BMR. But, you know, with to that point, we need to know what the what the specifics are. Because we need to know if we're reorganizing our buildings completely. Or if we're making some accommodations and adjustments to our nursing spaces, so.
Yeah, and I think the other big piece that we, I haven't seen out there, but I'm sure is, you know, sitting on many lists. Is our attendance policies for districts, I mean, we we can't keep our current attendance policy. If similar to Rhode Island, I I believe the governor said, if you have a sniffle, stay home. You can't, you you can't have that, our current attendance policy with those directives.
I'm laughing because on our policy subcommittee meeting agenda for Monday, we have athletics and infectious disease.
Well, I mean, and I I think, you know, I don't know if the, a lot of the attendance pieces go in the student handbooks, but I think we'll really have to. But I I think at the same time, part of your superintendent list, Jason, has to include, we we can't get a. A negative ten on our scores from the state based on attendance, if they say a kid can't come to school with a sniffle either. Like we, no, no district should be getting in trouble or.
Yeah, but you're going to have to, you're going to have to count attendance differently anyway, which is why we pushed our handbooks off. Because you will have families who choose not to return their children, but want that remote piece or whatever is offered to them. So you have to account attendance some way, so if somebody has a sniffle and they can't come to school, doesn't mean they still can't get a lesson, doesn't mean they still can't have attendance. So we, so we have to look at all. So we, so we have to look at all of those pieces. But I am going to move this conversation on, because we are doing that. And we are moving forward.
So last item from my report, just a very quick update on budget. Just so folks are aware, we are continuing to work very hard and collaboratively with all of our bargaining groups and all of our administration to review different ways of being creative around absorbing potential, revenue shortfall at the state level, which will inevitably impact all of us. We're not panicking. We're just planning a lot and coming up with quite a few different options and scenarios, again, with the goal of insulating our students, staff, and programs. And we are anticipating a, being able to give a full report on our next steps for the next school committee meeting. I think we're almost there. We've got some negotiation conversations with the union leadership on Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. So I think we'll be able to have a full public report as of our next school committee meeting. But know that, I know Matt has been very hard at work at looking at different grants and other opportunities to be able to try to minimize that revenue, the inevitable revenue shortfall, whatever that they look like for us. And again, we're planning. You know, we, we won't know state numbers until sometime, we hope, mid to late summer, but could be as late as the fall. And, you know, our mantra is, we don't panic, we just prepare. So we're coming up with quite a few scenarios, and we'll be able to share those publicly, I think, at the next school committee meeting, and provide some options for the committee who, you know, can decide what direction you'd like the administration to go in with that.
And, and I think that's a really important message that we share with our towns as well. I know the, the Millville Finance Committee meeting is, is right now, or the committee is meeting right now. There were concerns that their last meeting, that we would be going back to them for additional funds, given our shortfall, and that is not our intention. Our intention is to work with our, our groups and our organizations and our team to, to look at providing the best service and, and educational experience we can within the, within the means that are, are given to us, either from the state or our community. So we hope that Millville will pass the, the budget request, and we, it's our intention to live within that request.
Great. And that concludes my report. Unless there are any questions from the committee.
Anybody? Okay, Mr. Aaron Worth.
Well, good evening. The first, the first item on my report is the reorganization of the HR specialist position. And I will start by saying, it's probably inappropriately named. It's not, it's not as much a reorganization as it is just a, a small redistribution of some responsibilities and the addition of some support. So what you can see is the funding that we had budgeted for in FY21 for the HR specialist and the part-time bookkeeper. And to the column on the right, you can see what we're now looking at spending. I'm trying to focus the HR specialist's responsibilities to a lot more benefits administration, compliance, and some personnel work, whether it's building to building or just the onboarding, offboarding. But in addition to having that HR specialist, where we are, excuse me, we are looking to engage a company that I presented some of the information to you, I believe you had it in the package, that will serve as a consultation for HR purposes. And they provide services such as an electronic onboarding system. They are available for live on-call support for any types of HR issues. They would provide consultative support for investigations or any type of allegations or issues that come up with personnel. And quite frankly, the cost of the services are pretty minimal for the services that we get. And I think it'll be a really good bang for our buck. And combining that with someone being in a full-time position as the HR specialist focusing on the benefits, we should be able to move things forward. And you can see in the chart, the slight reorganization will, will end up with approximately a $34,000 savings.
Matt, can I just chime in on that too quickly? Just so the committee's aware, in my mid-year evaluation, there was some feedback around needing HR protocols and procedures. And while, you know, I certainly, you know, we don't want to drum up past issues, I, you know, I stand by the investigations that we've done at the personnel, at the personnel level, and stand strongly in the decisions made, and stand by those decisions. I do want the committee know that, you know, to know that I, I do take that feedback very seriously. And so Matt and I, you know, reviewed that feedback together and said, how do we look at this then, maybe through a different lens? When I, you know, looking specifically, if, if folks weren't, you know, pleased with the protocols we have in place as a district for some of these things, how might we engage, you know, with, with an outside HR consultation group that could help, you know, with, with, you know, tried and true research-based protocols? So we also have a lot of work to do to get in, in line with compliance issues around OSHA and some other things, needing a faculty handbook, you know, district faculty handbook and employee handbook, that kind of thing. So, you know, I know, Matt, I think you engaged with six different companies, five different companies.
I spoke with a number of different companies, and I got proposals from probably six of them. And, and after an analysis, I narrowed it down to about three companies. And this company stood out for the service that they provided, the opportunities that they had through their electronic systems that they were offering, and just the constant on-call support combined with the cost of it. This was, this was definitely the best price.
And Matt, have they worked with other educational institutions, districts?
Yep.
I mean, they're pretty generic in their brochure, but they have, yeah, okay.
They have.
Hey, Matt, there's no, there's no specific contract that they prove on this. It's a month-to-month, and we, at any point, can break our relationship with them, which I think is really important for the committee.
I'm sorry, I was going to say, that actually was the determining factor. I was really between two companies that were offering very similar services. But the other company wanted us to pay upfront for the entire year. And this company offered us a month-to-month, no-contract basis, because that's how they stand by their service. They're confident that we're going to become partners with them and that they're going to stay servicing the community, and hopefully that will be the case. And if not, we can stop.
Thanks, Matt. Anybody have any questions about that? Erin?
So the $13,500 is for a calendar year or a school year?
Correct. That's the total, if we were to stay engaged with them through the course of the year, that would be the, the cost for the entire year, school year.
And no addition, so this says consult on investigations. Are there, would there be additional fees? Or are there any hidden fees or additional fees for work?
There's no, there's no hidden fees. This includes our use of a new onboarding system, an electronic onboarding system as well. And there's no implementation fees, which is something that I saw in a number of the other companies. They have a one-time implementation fee in order to use their platforms. This doesn't have that. And when I say the consultation, someone is available constantly. The consultation is, is based on our need. So if we need more advice, or if we need a greater depth of service, they are able to provide it. What this does not include is onsite visitations. So this is not a company coming in to run our HR processes. This is completely consultative. However, it's 100%. There's no additional fees for a three-hour conversation. There's no additional fees to have them review our handbooks, to have them review our policies or our protocols, or anything of that nature.
So the last, like, page 12 has the monthly fees.
Right.
And the one-time. That is, is that this, this total of 13,5?
So to Jane's point, that one-time fee is in the proposal. It was waived for us.
But this is, but the $1,060 is what we'll pay monthly?
Correct. The thousands, the $1,060, and there's another, which I didn't include. So this, this package is for the HR piece alone. And then it's another, I believe it was like $60 or so a month for the online onboarding platform. So the total of the two pieces that we're purchasing comes out to the $13,500 for the year.
So it's 13,5 total, broken down to $1,060 per month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just, so whatever that actual number is, so.
It's a little less, but I think.
So you can see, so you can see, the 13,5 breaks down to $1,125 a month. There's a $65 fee for the onboarding platform, and I just included that into the, into the proposal. I didn't provide you with that piece of the proposal, because it literally just explained their onboarding platform, and said it was a $65 a month fee. But, but the bulk of what we're looking for is their services and having them be able to be on-call for consultation, to review practices, protocols, and to review our compliance pieces. And as Jason said, they will come in and review what it is that we have. They will look at what we're trying to change, and they'll offer, they have plenty of templates and guidance to provide, especially now as we return, hopefully, quickly from this COVID-19 situation. There will be a lot of compliance issues to take into consideration, and I'm thinking that this will be very helpful for us.
Any other questions? This is not a change in position necessarily, so it does not require.
Right. No, we're just, we're just zooming essentially in, filling the focus in on the job spec that's already there. But as, you know, you know, we communicate everything like this with the committee to make sure.
Right. Yep.
That's all.
Okay.
So the next report from, well, the next piece of my report, is the revenue report. If you take a look, you can see very happily that both Blackstone and Millville's assessments are fully paid. We have collected on everything owed. And if you look down the numbers, you can see essentially, we are right where we would expect to be, and we're about one payment off in every category. So you can see that chapter, the state aid, chapter 70, we have one more payment of $897,000. That's been our consistent payment on a monthly basis, and we're just expecting that last one to come in at the end of June. We also are expecting some of our, our title funds to come in and other grant funds to come in closer toward the end of the month. New news, we were anticipating that the Medicaid program was going to possibly see a $70,000 loss. We just were notified that one of our interim claims was processed, and we should be receiving a sum of money that will actually put us for a total of approximately only $500 under where we had budgeted for. So it actually, for this current fiscal year, it came out on target. Again, the concerns with Medicaid have been the changes with billing, and some programs not even willing to do the billing anymore. So we do anticipate that there will be a hit moving forward. But we budgeted significantly less for Medicaid for the FY21 budget. Any questions on the revenues? I'll move on to the total expenditure review. So as you can see, I would like to start by saying, these numbers are still preliminary for running in toward the end of the year. You will see a lot of numbers that changed significantly, and I'll walk through a few of them, so that you can, you can get a better understanding of, of how they changed. The first one that will stand out dramatically is the transportation services at $3,300. If you take, if you take a look, I just wanted to say that, that I was anticipating some savings with respect to the transportation, and that what I had presented didn't factor in all of the special education transportation services and athletics transportation services and field trips that had already been budgeted for as well. So you will see in that area significant savings that I didn't reference when I mentioned the, the contract negotiations. The other, the other numbers that you can take a look at, obviously, we see a significant savings in heating of the building and utilities and maintenance of grounds. That's because of our closure for the last number of weeks. And the benefits, the benefits number that you're looking at is mainly because of changes in plans. We always try to plan conservatively with the budget, but if four or five people take individual plans as opposed to family plans, it can, it can have fairly significant swings. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
And we're in the process now of prioritizing, you know, key items that we were, we're going to purchase out of FY20.
Right.
To make sure that we're making room in '21 again for what, whatever this potential revenue shortfall may be. Again, back to your point, we're doing that because we, we are committed to not going back to either community. So we need to use every penny we have.
Great.
You also have the personnel report, which you can review. If you have any questions, please feel free to email or, or call the business office. For the facilities update, I have essentially nothing but good news.
Woo-hoo!
Yeah, updated. Originally, I had mentioned that the Silktown Roofing had presented a contract to Blackstone. They actually voted at the Board of Selectmen's meeting just this week to move forward with the work that was presented to them. So they're going to engage in that contract, and we're going to get that work started as soon as we can. With respect to the secure vestibule at the high school, hardware and glass have come in already. We're told that the door frames are going to be shipping out around the 22nd of June, and the project is still expected to be completed by late July. If not, and, and things do get delayed a bit, it should still be done before students will return to the building. Capital planning, RFP, has been going well. As you all know, we have all of the surveys that got sent out. They just recently were sent out to faculty and students by the principals. That's for grades eight through 12, and we're waiting for those results to come in, and they've been analyzing that. We've also seen some of the parts of the report that they put together with respect to building capacity and this, this space usage, which has been pretty helpful already in some of the things that we've been looking at. And the boiler project is running along as well. We did move the remaining oil from the tank at, at Millville to Hartnett Middle School. We are anticipating that that'll give us a savings between $5,000 and $10,000 on the cost of that oil.
Nice.
And the project meetings are every Wednesday morning at 9:00 a.m., and I've been attending them as best as possible. And if anyone wants weekly updates, just email me right after 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday. And that is it for the facilities report.
All right. Thank you. School, uh, school committee forum, does anybody have? I, I'll get to you, Sarah. I would like to, and I wish I had done it when Mike was here, but specifically thank Mike Dudek, Keith Ducharme, the advisors to the senior class, Jason and Matt. I think the senior send-off celebration far exceeded anyone's expectation. And I was stopped in Market Basket last night by a parent who said it was better than any graduation she had ever attended anywhere at any time. So I really appreciate that effort. Again, congratulate our, our seniors and wish them well. I know other things are still in the works for them, but that was certainly something that, that was great. Sarah, you had something. You're muted, though, Sarah.
Okay. Hopefully, my internet doesn't act up, because I've been freezing. But I just wanted to say that I'm happy to hear that the leadership team is going to be reading the book, White Fragility, and I plan on reading it. And I would like to invite any committee members who would like to read and discuss it to. And I plan on reading it and I would like to invite any committee members who would like to read and discuss it to reach out and we can have a little book club. I think it's time that we start looking at ourselves and having difficult conversations. And I just want to say, like, I admit to being disappointed that we can't come up with some sort of statement that shows solidarity with peaceful protesting against racism and acts of police brutality. So I'm just saying it as an individual. Thank you.
I don't know that we can't come up with a statement. I think we need to work on it together. But I think we, we can do that. Aaron?
I will echo you, Jane, on the senior celebration. I would have stood, stood there for three more hours if we had to. Even though it was an hour late, the parade was an hour late, those crowds were still on the streets waiting for our kids. And I think that was huge. I've had many people say we should have a parade every year, even when we have, get back to our graduation. And I was like, but we do. They have a senior parade that, that is much shorter. But, you know, so maybe that will be a little more attended in the future, more than just parents. I also want to mention the Millville Town Meeting for June 22nd. I think that's the right date. It's Monday. It's two weeks from, it's a week from this Monday. I honestly don't know. Is, is it outside or is it in?
It is outside in the, in the Millville ball fields. You want to write off that so you can park in the elementary school parking lot and walk down into the field.
So I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, we, we do still need our budget passed from Millville. Blackstone got through their budget in record time, right? So I'm hoping Millville's can be that successful. And of course, I hope we have a quorum to get through it. Did, did they change their warrants for just budget items at this time or are we doing the entire?
For the most part, there's budget and, and a few capital things, but yeah, no, no regional agreement till the fall and a few other things were taken off the list.
And then I have a shout out for some information that was shared with me this week and I appreciated it. We've got some dean lists alumni and one of them is amongst us here. Jack Keef from Nichols College and Cameron LeBullier are both BMR alumni and they are on the Nichols College Dean's List.
Yay, Jack.
Also got Madison Robitaille and she made the Dean's List at Assumption College for the semester. So congrats to you, Jack, and all the.
Six semesters and counting.
How many?
I've done, I've been on Dean's List six semesters, so I got two.
Congratulations, Jane.
Sorry, it was shared with me this week, so I thought, perfect, he will be at the meeting. And how many semesters left?
Two.
Wow.
Good job.
Congratulations, Jack. All right, anyone else?
So obviously I had a great time at the ceremony for our seniors. Thank you to the committee members that made that a little more special and it was great. I mean, the parade was, I, I was texting Jason as I was going through the parade. And my face actually hurt by the time I got home because like Alexa was, first of all, we have a sunroof and it, we had to like literally convince her that it was okay and she wasn't going to be arrested for being outside of the sun, off in the sunroof. She is like a super rule follower, but once she got out there, she had such a great time. And there were so many people along that route. And I've been on, I went on streets in Millville that I've never been on, which was interesting in itself. And it was just a great time. So thank you to everybody who put that together. I think parents, students had a great time and I think parents were very pleased with it as well. So thank you. And thank you for all our teachers as we end this school year, teachers, staff, administration for just persevering through what we could never expect and that they just stepped up for the, to the plate. It, it was, you know, the best we could do in this situation, I think.
Aaron, you wanted to say something else?
Oh, yes. I would also be remiss, you know, in my early years on this committee, when it was someone's last meeting, we had cake. So I just need to give a shout out to Wendy, who is here in the last second of our meeting, but I'm glad you're here. Because once again, we're going to say goodbye to her. I don't believe she's done. But Wendy, Wendy will not be seeking reelection of her seat. And I just want to thank her for all of her time. I think we will all miss her.
Guidance?
Guidance and her opinions and her input on everything that we've needed and more. And we'll surely still be reaching out to you when we need to. I thought we were going to write her in.
No, we're writing you in, Sarah. By the way, elections are next Monday.
We're writing Sarah in, yeah.
Yes, elections are, are next Monday, June 15th, both towns. Aaron is running in, in Millville and Sarah is running in Blackstone for the four-year seat. And then I believe there's another gentleman asking to be written in as well. I've seen his signs. I don't know his name. I apologize. If somebody does, please say so.
Chris Lanou.
Chris Lanou. There we go. He is running as well. Okay. No one else? Wendy, we do, I do thank you for, for stepping up, filling in a spot and filling it better than we had, could expect. And we will miss you. And I agree with Aaron. I think you will be back again someday, maybe. And well, at your own school, I've seen the news reports. I know these are tough times.
Been a busy week, been a busy week. But I appreciate being on the school committee. I enjoy being on the school committee. I enjoy taking part in the superintendent evaluation, learning about it as I go. And I'd be more than willing to do anything that's asked of the committee and help out in any way that I can. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Jesse, I assume there's no public forum? I see nothing in the chat and I see nothing from you, so I'm going to assume that. I will entertain and we will go, move into executive session, not to return to, to adjourn in executive session. I'll entertain that motion and we'll do real call for that.
Don't move. Second.
Not sure who said what, but I'm going with Tara and Aaron, or Karen. Karen, you're looking good there.
Still in my car.
I know, it's great. All right. So Karen, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Me? Yes. Oh, me. I'm waiting for me to answer. I don't know. Been a long, long meeting. I wish everybody well as they do end their, end their academic season, but join us in the summer. We've got tutors and sessions and help available. And we have our next meeting, June 25th. And Jesse, if you're good, I think you can turn it over to Jason. And we'll say thank you for, for everything you've done for us and your video of the graduation ceremony was great. I'm sorry that we were microphoned and didn't know it, but we, we were having fun.
Look at the guy in the blue shirt.